I'd like to welcome you to our first meeting of the year. We're going to have a combination type meeting. We're going to go right into our meeting after the organizational meeting, then we're going to go right into our regular board meeting. So we're going to get started with our, with our agenda. And I'd like to just start reading off where we normally would regarding our regular meeting, which states, "Due to the passage of House Bill 197 and the response to COVID-19 public health crisis, and the governor's order prohibiting mass gatherings, the Board of Education meetings will be virtual. You may view by internet livestream, colon, A T P, colon, backslash, backslash, board.betfordschools.org, or Spectrum Cable TV, colon, um, channel 1025. If you wish to speak in the audience participation portion of the agenda, please make sure you connect with our tech, uh, technology director, James Myers. You should have made those preparations ahead of time and he will phone call you and make the call and make sure that you're connected with, uh, with us as a board and, um, and. So basically, uh, participationally, uh, betford schoolboard.org presentations are limited to three minutes each. So, uh, once again, thank you for joining us and, um, welcome. Uh, I will be presiding as a, as a pro temp for our meeting. And so at this time, um, Mr. Parkinson, could you please call the role, please?
Mrs. Boynton?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
Here.
Mrs. Patterson?
Present.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
And Mr. Tench?
Here.
Okay, uh, can we please play, uh, stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? All right, do we have the flag? Okay, there we go. I pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America.
And to.
One nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and free of sin.
For all. Thank you. Okay, at this time, um, my, my role as the pro temp is to, uh, we're to elect as a board, as a board for our president and vice president. And through section 3313 point 14 of the Ohio revise code requires the Board of Education organize January 15th of each year by choosing one of the members to serve as the president and one member as the vice president. So at this time, uh, we would like the election process to take place and we're going to start with the election process for the president of the school board for the current 2021 school year. So are there any nominations for the president of the board? The second is not needed, but are there any nominees for that?
I'd like to nominate Tim Tench for the president of the board for 2021.
Okay. Tench?
Mr. Stevens. Stevens, I would like to nominate Mr. Stevens for president of the board.
Uh, Ms. Boynton, I, I appreciate the, the, the recognition and the, and the honor to serve again, but I was, we need to decline this one. So I'm going to decline this one at this time.
Then I would love to nominate Ms. Patterson for board president.
Ms. Patterson, okay. Okay, uh, is there any other nominations for the presidency? Okay, at this time, can I have a motion to close the nominations for the presidents?
So move.
Okay, um, okay, we have a, a, a second by, who was the second? I'm sorry.
Me, uh, Rob Kennedy.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Kennedy to close the nominations. Is there a second also?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Patterson? Okay, any discussion regarding this, the nominee? Okay, we will now vote for the motion to close the nomination. Okay, we did that. For the president, uh, so we need to take a call, a roll call. So at this time, um, I would like to take a roll call for Mr. Tench as the president. Could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Boynton?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
Hi.
Mrs. Patterson?
You're muted, Ms. Patterson.
No.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
And Mr. Tench?
Hi.
Okay. Okay, we have, uh, three noes and two yeses for Mr. Kennedy, I mean, Mr. Tench. Okay, uh, please take the role for Ms. Patterson.
Mrs. Boynton?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Tench?
No.
And Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have three votes yes for Ms. Patterson and two noes. Uh, overall, Ms. Patterson, congratulations on being the president for the 2021 school year. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go with the nomination for the, um, vice president. Are there any nominations for the vice president, please?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Boynton.
Boynton?
I'd like to nominate Tim Tench.
Tim Tench? Okay, any other, uh, nominees, please? Okay, we've all had, uh, we had the nominations. Okay, is there a motion? Okay, yeah. Motion to close the nomination, please, of the vice president?
I moved him close the nominations on the set two names.
Yes, on the two names, Ms. Boynton and Mr. Tench, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Patterson has a motion. Uh, can I get a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy, uh, second the motion to close. Any discussion for the vice presidency? Okay, if none, we will take, uh, the roll call for the vote for Ms. Boynton?
Ms., okay, Ms. Boynton?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Mrs. Patterson?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
And Mr. Tench?
No.
Okay, we have three, uh, three votes no, uh, we officially, uh, we go ahead and still make the, um, we can do the nomination based on Mr. Tench. And can we get a roll call on Mr. Tench, please?
Mrs. Boynton?
No.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Patterson?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
And Ms. Tench?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, with that being said, congratulations, Ms. Boynton, as the vice president for the 2021 school year. Congratulations and, uh, okay, we have that. Uh, are there any, um, let's see here, let's go with, uh, any comments or anything pertaining to, uh, to the, for the incoming, um, board president? Do you like to say anything before we get started, uh, Ms. Patterson?
I'll just say thank you to everybody. Um, I know it's been a tumultuous school year and I'm just hoping that we can get our children back in school, uh, where they belong.
Okay, anything, any comments, uh, Ms. Boynton, as the vice president?
Yes, I would just like to thank you for this opportunity. And I look forward to serving.
Okay, all right, um, at this time, I want to turn it, oh, okay, outgoing. Okay, well, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for, for working together as the outgoing president. Thank you very much. Um, we've had a lot of challenges, uh, this past school year and, and a lot of difference, uh, different things came our way, you know, but we were able to handle it and be able to work through it. So I want to thank all of you and our community and staff members for your support. Thank you, thank you very much. And, um, we hope that, uh, we can move forward and be able to, uh, I'll look backwards, we'll move forward as we improve our district, um, facing this, you know, down downhill hopefully of this COVID-19. So, um, at this time, we're going to move on to our agenda, um, but at this time, I believe, uh, Ms. Patterson, being the incoming, um, new president.
I thought we had discussed that you would continue to carry this meeting out.
Well, uh, yeah, we can, um, that's.
I thought we discussed that on Monday that you.
Yeah.
Thought that's what Mr. Parkinson had suggested.
Well, I, I thought in, in understanding that we would continue, we wouldn't have to close it up, you would just continue.
Okay.
President, as we move forward. So, uh, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
Okay.
Uh, so that you can go ahead and continue as where, where we're at right now on the agenda, which is the approval of the, uh, liaisons, uh, at that portion of the agenda.
They have to be sworn in, Phil, Phil, Byron, Eva's got to be sworn in first.
Yeah. Mr. Parkinson, go ahead and go through your process of swearing in the president and vice president. I am so sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Stevens, uh, Mrs. Patterson, I, I will read the oath of office and then after I read the oath, if you could say I do. Do you, Mrs. Patterson, solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as president of the Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until a successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations, Mrs. Patterson.
Thank you.
I'll, uh, I'll have this form for you, uh, to sign at your convenience.
Okay, thank you.
The next up is Mrs. Boynton. Mrs. Boynton, I'll, I'll read the oath and afterwards, if, if you could say I do. Mrs. Boynton, do you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties of said office as vice president of the Board of Education to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office until a successor is elected and qualified?
I do.
Congratulations, Mrs. Boynton.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson.
I will have a form ready for you to sign at your convenience.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now, Ms. Patterson.
Okay.
You, you have the seat now and, um, we're going to start out at the 2.05, I believe.
Okay, I, I, I want to thank Mr. Stevens for being the president for the past year. Uh, again, it's been a, a rough year for everybody, but like you said, we've made it through and, and just thank you for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Two points, uh, five, uh, it's not coming up. Uh, what's 2.05?
That was your, your comment.
Okay, that, that's it. Okay, so we, we're at 3.01?
That's correct.
Okay, um, I, uh, okay, let's move that out the way. Can you mute? Who has that? Is that you, Mr. Stevens?
No, I was the alternate.
Okay, who's the legislative liaison, uh, Mr. Kennedy?
No, it wasn't me.
No, that, that. I think that was me and Rob is no longer on the foundation, so I'm going to have to move to a foundation rep.
Okay, so Rob.
I was the alternate, I was the alternate.
Okay, so you would now take the legislative liaison to the Ohio School Board?
Who, me?
Uh huh.
That's fine.
Since, okay, since you're not on the, uh, uh, foundation, okay. And Mr. Stevens, you're going to be the, uh, the assistant?
There is, well, right now, I can see that, but I, yeah, I'll be the alternate of the, uh.
An achievement, I have, uh, Ohio School Board Association Annual Conference Delegate. Who was that?
That's usually the president.
Hmm, I, I don't know, Mr. Uh.
Maybe, maybe not, but.
Did you have that last year?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't you just go ahead and assign, Ms. Patterson?
Okay, all right, let's go. Ohio School Board Association Conference Alternate, that's the delegate in the, so, Mr. Kennedy, were you, you're going to be the delegate and Mr. Stevens will be the alternate. And foundations will be Mr. Uh, Mr. Tench and Mrs. Um, Mrs. Boynton will be the legislation liaison to the school board.
Okay.
Okay, is that okay?
Uh huh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, our dates. Our dates for our meetings are, are listed. Uh, you see the ones that, uh, our work sessions are at 5:00 PM. Any questions about our dates of the meeting? All right, I, I need, uh, I do need a consensus for the dates. I need a motion for the dates and I also need a motion for the appointments.
So move.
All right, it's been properly moved, it's in second.
Second, Mr. Stevens.
By Mr. Stevens, uh, for our, uh, appointments and for our dates. Um, roll call, please?
Mr. Kennedy?
Hi.
Mr. Stevens?
Hi.
Mr. Tench?
Hi.
Mrs. Boynton?
Hi.
And Mrs. Patterson?
Hi, thank you, 5-0, thank you. Uh, resolutions for 20, the 21, 30, uh, board. Have you gone through the resolutions and saw the? I'm having a problem. Okay. Uh, 3.03, I need a motion for, uh, resolutions for 21 to 23 through 21 to 31. It's been moved by Mr. Stevens, second.
Mr. Stevens.
Huh?
Second.
Okay, second by Mrs. Boynton, um, roll call, please?
Mr. Tench?
Hi.
Mrs. Boynton?
Hi.
Mr. Kennedy?
Hi.
Mr. Stevens?
Hi.
Mrs. Patterson?
Hi, 5-0, thank you, board. Awards and presentations and communications by Superintendent Dr. Selico.
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson. Um, I believe, um, Mrs. Uh, Russell, there we go. Okay, so do we take off the agenda?
Yeah.
Let's keep the agenda off. I guess, um, I got a text from Mrs. Russell saying that they couldn't see the board and who was speaking, so we'll leave the agenda off. I guess we'll have to work on that for the next meeting if we could make it work for both, for showing, so. All right, well, thank you, Mrs. Patterson, um, congratulations to you and to Mrs. Boynton. It looks like it'll be girl power, I guess, right? Well, we're going to outnumber the guys this time. All right, um, well, this evening, um, rather than a, a presentation, uh, we had seen the return to school, uh, presentation before and I shared with you as well as the entire staff and parents, our plan, the thorough document that's about 25 or six pages. Um, clearly, I want to say upfront that that plan is, if we tried to include every single detail, would that would be 100 pages and I don't think any parent would pick it up and read it. So we tried to cover the, the main topics, but certainly there's more work in details, uh, that will happen. Um, and conversations between principals and staff with the, the finer details, so I just want to say that. Uh, but with that said, I know that the last meeting, um, we got into the conversation about a recommendation for a return to school date. Uh, I'm also aware that the vaccination is, um, supposedly, uh, on its way. Uh, I will share that I am on calls with, um, with the county every week and we have a direct line to the governor's office and there are many things that we have been promised that have not come through, so without any disrespect, I want to say that they not always, uh, the timelines that are given are not always have been adhered to. So I'm a little cautious on that. I think it's ambitious. I hope it happens and we are all vaccinated very soon. Um, but I have been asked by the board to, if I was going to make a recommendation for the return to school on February 1st and the reason for February 1st is that, uh, our quarter ends on the 27th and then we have two days in between, uh, before we, uh, which is Thursday, Friday and it would make sense to start fresh on a Monday. I think we had a question about that recommended by, um, Mr. Stevens as a suggestion and then on the 28th and 29th, we thought it would be a nice bit to fit our MAP testing in those two days. So it would actually be a kind of transition over to the third quarter. And so with that said, I, I recognize the hesitancy and still the concerns surrounding COVID. I'm, I'm not naive, I've been impacted, uh, you know, I've, I've known many people who've been impacted. I've not myself gotten it, thank goodness, but I, many people close to me, so I do understand, um, you know, what we're dealing with and many of our staff have, have contracted as well. And so are, we're definitely concerned about that, but I, I do believe we have a safe way of returning our students. I would like to see our students back in the classrooms. I think I've been consistent on that and have not wavered from that. I would like to see our children return on February 1st. I would recommend that to the board. And in doing so, uh, we will be as cautious and as careful and as safe as we can for our students and our staff. Our surveys have run out. We've gotten a, a number of responses from our parents. Uh, but I did also state that if we don't get a response by this Friday, that these children will be placed, uh, in remote learning and we've made that clear to parents, um, a few times now. So, uh, that is my recommendation. You have the plan. I know many of you have called me with questions. Um, so I, I know you've, you've looked at it and, and if you have any other questions, certainly, I have, um, Felice here, I have James, who have addressed, uh, specific portions of that plan and we have Jerry and Dr. Johnson. So we, we would be glad to entertain any questions. Um, so thank you, Mr. Patterson.
Dr. Selico?
Yes.
Even, even though I know that we, just like the false, you know, the first quarter, uh, we said we had a date and then we had changed things based on how things, uh, happened and things have, um, risen through me regarding COVID-19. And I still have that same, um, mentality based on, we do have a date, which is February 1st. But once again, uh, the way that things are, we're thinking, you know, I, I want to leave that flexibility and let the folks know that, you know, this is not guaranteed and, and because February, February 1st get here doesn't mean we're going to start then.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stevens, and I apologize. That is the second part of my recommendation and believe it or not, I have it written on a piece of paper and my writing is so bad that, that is what that said, but I, I didn't, didn't read it. Um, but yes, that is correct. I, and I guess I'm so used to saying that everything is in flux and can change at any minute. We certainly know that, um, a week before, if, if there's a spike and the recommendation is to close schools or whatever comes our way, we certainly need to have that flexibility to change our minds. I totally agree with you, Mr. Stevens. But as of today, um, I would suggest the February 1st with the caveat that things could potentially change and become worse and we would reserve the right, if you will, to change our minds up until that day, frankly. And our, our parents have been very good about being flexible, as have our staff, knowing that we've made, we've had to make last minute changes. So thank you, Mr. Stevens, I appreciate you pointing that out.
Thank you, you're welcome.
I have a question. Dr. Selico, how many people returned that survey?
Uh, we just looked at them today. James, and I know you're on the call here, um, each building had, I want to say the elementaries were in the 300 range because they were, or 200s, um, the high school was low. Um, but we were at about, across the board, it was about 50%. Um, either way, wanting, you know, return or not return.
So in the plan, it says if they do not respond by tomorrow, they are remote for the rest of the year?
That's correct.
Okay, we're going to stick to that.
That, that is.
Backtrack and if we had 10 more percent, people are going to come and say, you know, I, I want my kid to come now.
Yeah, we actually had that exact conversation today with our administrative team and the intention is to stay as, as close to that as we can. We know that there will always be people who will try and who will have exceptions, but for our planning purposes, we're quite clear that we have got to know a number. Um, we can't plan and move ahead if, if, you know, 25% of the people change their minds, we just won't be able to accommodate that.
Thank you.
So you're saying that the definite deadline will be tomorrow, Friday, January the 8th?
That's correct, Mrs. Patterson, and, and a lot of that hinges on like transportation, for example. Pat's got to scramble now and do these routes in three weeks when you're doing a whole district, you know, that's a lot, even though it's half the people, but sometimes that actually makes it more complicated because they're from all over and, you know, kind of spread out. So that's one of the big reasons and certainly, uh, accommodating how many students we can fit in classrooms and we know that preschool, I'm sorry, kindergarten through third grade, if we got a really high response rate of people wanting to return, we would have to go to Plan B, which then becomes the two days a week and we're, we're hoping not to do that based on the data we retrieved from the last time. Um, that seems to be that we would be able to do the four days a week.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, uh, Dr. Selico, regarding, uh, the, the issue that, uh, that Mr. Kennedy brought up, um, I, I would generally, the rule of thumb is anytime you have a, a, a large group or whatever, you, uh, either making a, a dinner or whatever, you, you figure in maybe 10% more. And I, I would think that, uh, might be a good idea for us that, to have that flexibility of, after tomorrow, if we've got a handful of parents that want to, uh, didn't get in in time or whatever, uh, have that flexibility up to 10%, uh, you know, additional over what, uh, signs up by to, by tomorrow. Uh, and then after that, uh, you, you shut it down after that 10% is reached, uh, just for a number, if you needed a number. Um, and I, and I just want to, uh, concur with, with, uh, with Mr. Stevens said in regard of, uh, yeah, we all want the kids to get back in school. We all want our students back in, in a classroom in front of the teachers. Uh, but I, I'm, I'm glad to hear that we are not, uh, going to be holding our own feet to the fire in regards to a, a drop dead date at, on February 1st. Uh, I think it's so important to have that flexibility, uh, based on the instability of this disease. So I'm, I'm glad to hear we're on, on board about that and I, I support that stance wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Is the agenda going to come back up, Dr. Selico?
Um, well, I guess, isn't that, Mrs. Patterson, that could be up to you. I think the reason that we took it down was because people couldn't see all of you, which I'm not sure why, because I believe we can see the agenda and all of you. I'm not sure if that's a different accent, but I'm not sure. Um, would you prefer it be up? Would you prefer it be up?
Yes, unless I go upstairs.
Yeah. Dan, if you could please put that up, I'd appreciate it. Put it back up. And James, while you're on there, is there any reason why people are not able to see the board and only the agenda? Do they need to hit their button for the little people icon?
When we stream the meeting, we can choose to show one or the other. If you show all of our faces and the agenda off to the side, the agenda will be too small to read on most screens.
Okay, so we will fix that for next time. But in the meantime, we'll have it up for Mrs. Patterson's.
I don't know if you want me to go through it, or you're okay with where it is now?
Now, if you want to go through it, and then that way the people can see, because, I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, it is small.
Well, I mean, since it's up there now, go ahead. But I want you to know that I have a page copy, and that's it, if you wanted that.
Do we have any audience participation at this time?
Yes, we do. We have four audience participation members.
Okay.
For those who are participating, you are going to get a phone call from our Google meeting, which means it will be a non-local number from an area code you may not recognize. When you answer this call, you will be immediately live with the Board of Education, and we will address you as you pick up. So our first caller will be to Trish Duncan.
Madam President, Mrs. Mr. Zagreba, for your information, we are entering into audience participation at 6:33. Thirty-minute time limit. We'll start then.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Trish Duncan, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. You are now live with the Bedford Board of Education.
Thanks, Mr. Meyer. Good evening, Board President Patterson, and congratulations on your election, members of the board, Dr. Selico, and members of the cabinet. My original plan was to come before the board tonight to address the unprofessional and disrespectful comments regarding our Bedford teachers that were made by a Bedford board meeting, which can be heard if you listen to minutes 39 through 49 of the December 30th public school board meeting. In hindsight, after some reflecting, I, along with many of our teachers, have come to the realization that this display during a board meeting says far more about the one who was speaking that night than the message they were trying to send. This is nothing, there is nothing that can be said to a board member that will erase the level of disrespect they exhibited, which will no doubt resonate with our teaching staff, both young and old. What I will come to the board tonight for, though, is to say thank you. Thank you to those board members who did respect our work as teachers. Thank you to those board members who do respect our profession, and thank you to those board members who respect the opinions, thoughts, concerns of the ones who are in the trenches daily. Thank you for demonstrating that safety of our students, our teachers, our staff, administrators, and all of our families were in the forefront of your decisions and not demeaned, dismissed, mocked, or ridiculed. Your display of respect and understanding were evident from your decisions that evening on October 29. Thank you for recognizing the pride and self-respect our teachers have, which has been the driving force behind them stepping up to the plate, going above and beyond selfishly and tirelessly to create relationships with our students while also preparing engaging, interactive, and fantastic lessons. I also want to thank Dr. Selico and her cabinet and administration to the same end. Thank you for your collaboration in working with myself, Doug Dressman, our vice president, our BEA negotiating team, and the building reps, as well as BEA as a whole. We remain encouraged to be a part of the merging of the roads that lead to two-way respect. While we may not always agree, demonstrating and practicing mutual respect was never a concern. It is a positive working relationship that has always been the feather and the cap of our district, administration, and unions, and appreciate the administration's role in that. As we move forward for the rest of the year, there are still many variables, unanswered questions, and concerns and apprehensions, including resuming person instruction without the vaccine. But I feel confident, at the end of the day, the respect shown between several members of the board, the entire administrative staff, and BEA, we will be able to work through those hard decisions, appreciate contributions, and strive for positive outcomes that will assist us in being unified in our resolve.
Madam President, with apologies to the speaker, that is three minutes.
Okay.
So what is best for all? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zagreba.
All right, thank you. Mr. Meyer, the next caller?
Yes, Madam President. The next caller is Michelle Belito. She has to comment on teachers' perspective of the pandemic and how it affects us. Calling her now.
Phone right now. Leave a message after the beep, and I'll get back to you when I can. Thanks.
At the tone, please record your message. When you've finished recording, you may hang up or press 1 for more options.
All right, we'll go to the next caller.
The next caller is Ariane Gilmer. And her topic was clarification on the options for the high school, how they're going to work or be presented. Ms. Gilmer, are you with us?
I'm here.
Thank you. You are now live with the Bedford Board of Education.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Madam President, as well as all administration and the cabinet. I hope everyone is well. Happy New Year to you all as well.
Thank you.
I didn't really have a question. I just was looking through the, back to the reopening plan for the high school, and some of my students had questions about how the virtual was going to work. So I just wanted to make sure that when they had questions or if their parents had questions, that we were able to explain to them in detail what the differences were between the 100% virtual and the 100% virtual platform. And I also wanted to make sure that they knew that the 100% virtual platform, I wanted to make sure that they knew that was something that they could possibly be putting in if they don't fill out the survey, if I was not mistaken. I just wanted to make sure that all parents and students were clear on their options when it came to the virtual 100% versus the virtual platform. That was all.
Dr. Selico, you would like to take that?
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson. Well, as always, you know, I always encourage our teachers to have conversations with our principals. I think, you know, they're always the first line. So I would urge Mr. Thompson to reach out to Ms. Gilmer to address her concern, as well as making sure that the parents have clarification. I will say that we did get a number of calls, quite honestly, and I expected that from parents who had questions. So I know that some of them have, as well as the school offices, but we will make sure that they have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Mr. Meyer?
Next caller is Shonda Martin, and Shonda's comment was waiting to return to school after vaccination on March 1st. And we will add her call now. Ms. Martin, are you with us?
I am. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. You are live with the Bedford Board of Education.
Thank you, and I want to echo the same greeting that Ms. Gilmer gave you all, because I don't know how I can top that. She included everything. The reason that I would like to speak this evening is to discuss the proposal released by Governor Delain today. He has expressed a desire to have students back in school by March 1st, and he presented a proposal to vaccinate teachers if the superintendent would sign off on a commitment to return to in-person instruction by March 1st. With that being said, why wouldn't we wait until the vaccine is available? Because at this point, my concern is a major disruption in the learning process if we were to return in February. We're already experiencing a shortage of subs, and without students in the buildings, we've had numerous COVID cases among adults in our building. If we return in February and teachers are constantly sick and consequently absent, it will be detrimental to the learning continuum in the classroom. And we all know that virtual is not the preferred learning method by students and teachers alike, but it has provided uninterrupted instruction and consistency for our students. In closing, I too would like to address some of the comments made in previous board meetings. There were statements and insinuations made that teachers do not want to return to in-person learning. I want to speak on behalf of all of my colleagues. We absolutely do want to return to in-person learning. I've been teaching for 24 years, and there's no reward greater than the look on a student's face when they grasp the concept. However, our first priority is to provide a safe and healthy environment where students and teachers can thrive without being fearful. We are rightfully fearful of this virus as it continues to devastate families. Our fear and very valid concerns should not have been interpreted as a resistance or unwillingness to being with our students. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is that the last call, Mr. Meyer?
I have, Michelle Belito has provided a different number for us to call with her comment, teachers' perspective of the pandemic affects us. Adding her to the call now. Ms. Belito, are you with us?
I am. I apologize that my phone automatically blocked the number, so I apologize, my cell phone. So thank you, Mr. Meyer, for checking that and giving me a call back.
You're welcome. You are now live with the Bedford Board of Education.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Board President. Mrs. Patterson, congratulations to you and Mrs. Boynton on your new appointments. Members, I'd also like to welcome members of the board, Dr. Selico, and members of the cabinet. As many of you know, I'm Michelle Belito, and I'm a 20-year veteran at Bedford High School. I would like to thank the administration and the board for a successful first semester. These uncertain times are filled with inconsistency, but I can tell you that the Bedford City School District has been a force that has continued to provide consistency for our students. And that is something that not many other districts can say. For our students, their learning was never interrupted due to the flitting of going between in-person, hybrid, and remote learning. We continue to provide quality instruction while many other districts were changing learning models and stringing families along, sometimes on a week-by-week basis. I know the decision to go remote was not an easy one, but you put the safety of our students and faculty first. Lately, teachers across the country have received a slighted hand. This is what I wish to speak to today. While I cannot speak for teachers across the country, I can speak for myself and the teachers in this district. Teachers in this district have worked tirelessly to adapt to the changes and protect our students and made certain their right to learn was never impacted. However, the reality is that teachers also have their own families to protect as well. Our intentions are not questioned when we want to protect our students, so why are they questioned when we want to protect our families? We have the right to voice our concerns and questions on safety protocols. At the high school level, we want to know how is cleaning classrooms between class transitions occurring? How will common areas like hallways, restrooms, and lunchrooms be monitored to make certain students adhere to social distancing protocols? And what if safety protocols are not followed? These are just a few of the questions posed in our district. I know that we cannot possibly foresee the future, and some of these questions are not even answered at the state level. But we should promote open dialogue and not condemn those who have questions because we all have concerns. Many of us have to balance working remotely while our own children are learning remotely. As parents, we have experienced firsthand the effects of the isolation our children feel. We have felt divided about how to help our students while helping our own families. Whose safety do I put first? Whose health, physical, or mental is more important? Whose fears and concerns are valid?
Apologies to the speaker. That is three minutes.
Thank you. That is three minutes. Our time is up. Thank you, Mrs. Belito.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. That was the last caller, Mr. Meyer?
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll move.
You're muted, Ms. Patterson.
Okay, we'll go to consent agenda 6.01. I don't know, Mr. Stevens, did you receive any calls about the consent agenda?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I need a motion for the consent agenda 6.01. I didn't catch who said.
Mr. Tensh.
Mr. Tensh, okay, second?
Second, Phil Stevens.
All right, second, Mr. Stevens. It's been properly moved in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tensh?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mrs. Boynton?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Mr. Kennedy, you're muted.
I think he went to unmute and then got out of the meeting. He hit the wrong button.
Yeah.
There is.
I'm back. Aye. And Mrs. Patterson?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, thank you board. 7.01, the second reading approval of the policies. Do we vote on that this time, Mrs. Dr. Selico?
Yes, Mrs. Patterson. This is your, yeah, your vote.
Okay, this is the second reading. Okay, I need a motion for 7.01 of the policy.
So move.
It's been moved by Mrs. Boynton, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kennedy. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Boynton?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Tensh?
Aye.
And Mrs. Patterson?
Aye. Five zero, thank you board. Superintendent's recommendations brought to us by our business manager, Mrs. Zagreba.
Thank you, Madam President. 8.01 is the consideration of the Third Amendment to the purchase agreement related to Aurora School. This one deals with the encumbrance created by the easement delivered to Dominion East, Ohio Gas quite some time ago. Buyer had some concerns about that and the effect that will have on the granting of a deed, whether it would be a general warranty deed or some other. These should be taken care of by tomorrow, and the extension that they requested is through tomorrow. I will report to the superintendent next week on how that came out. But we recommend, as does our attorney, that the board approve the Third Amendment agreement.
Okay. I need a motion for 8.01, the Third Amendment of the purchase agreement related to Aurora School.
Someone move to Phil Stevens.
Okay. Second, Mr. Kennedy. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mrs. Boynton?
Aye.
Mr. Tensh?
Aye.
And Mrs. Patterson?
Aye. Five zero, thank you board. 8.01. 8.01, personnel items as listed. I believe that this is the one that we had to take out of the consent agenda due to the fact that Mrs., Mr. Kennedy's wife is involved. Am I correct, Mr. Zagrebic?
Yes, that is correct, Madam President. The ethical and statute would prevent Mr. Kennedy from voting for a member of his family receiving compensation. That's why it was removed from the consent agenda, and will be voted on separately, giving him the opportunity to abstain.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for 8.02, the personnel item as listed.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Tensh, second?
Second, Phil Stevens.
Second, Mr. Stevens. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tensh?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mrs. Boynton?
Aye.
Mr. Kennedy?
Abstain.
And Mrs. Patterson?
Aye. 4 to 1 extension. Thank you, board. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mrs. Patterson. You know, we've been talking a lot, and we had our last meeting. I updated you fairly well, I think, on what we've been working on, which is the return to school. And with respect to the speakers this evening, you know, we, we, this is, we know this is a challenging time for everyone, and, you know, all of us included, and these decisions are not easy. They continue to remain hard. But I think, I know we will be able to provide a safe environment and do the best we can to ensure safety of everyone while providing an in-person education. And again, I would encourage staff members who have questions, please consult your, your principals. Ask them questions. That's what they're there for. We have given staff a great deal of input, as Mrs. Duncan mentioned, and I appreciate, you know, that acknowledging that we have been collaborative and allowing teachers to provide input. So we will continue to do so. We'll continue to work collaboratively on their questions and concerns. And lastly, I just want to again congratulate you, Mrs. Patterson and Mrs. Boynton. Look forward to working with the two of you. And Mr. Stevens, wanted to thank you for your work and time. Mr. Stevens and I spend a lot of time chatting with one another and, and, you know, kicking ideas around and, you know, providing guidance, et cetera, so I appreciate that. And Mr. Stevens, we do have a plaque for you, but seeing as though I was unable to come into the office today, I do not have that, but we will certainly get that to you. So thank you again for all your work, and, and I know you put in a lot of extra time days and weekends and evenings. I know that you're, you're definitely in it, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say thanks to Phil, excuse me, Mr. Stevens. I, you know, I, I think you did a good job leading us through some rough times last year, or this year, last year. You know, the communication was good, and, and, you know, again, I, I think, I think you did a very good job of, of leading this board, leading this board through the COVID, through some other situations we had that were difficult. So, you know, thanks, Phil. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Patterson, I, first of all, congratulations to you and Eva on your election. I'm, and I'd like to thank Phil as well. He did a great job in communications and keeping us informed of what was going on. And so a lot of difficult times, and we continue to plow through it and keeping our, our students and staff and then parents in the forefront of our decisions. One thing I wanted to mention as well is in regards to the consent agenda, I, I did want to wish all the best to our new appointments and the resignations on their new, on their new beginnings. And one in particular, Rebecca, resident, that is going to the Transportation Department after years in an elementary school. So she's leaving the little, little kids to go to the big boys. You know, so it's, that was a tough decision, and I wish her well in her new endeavor. And wish everybody a happy new year. Stay safe, and we'll take, continue to take it a day at a time.
Any other comments?
Yes, I do, Ms. Patterson. I would like to say, of course, this is my, my first year on the board, and it has been very different. And it has been a lot of challenges, a lot of things happening. But I would like to personally thank Mr. Stevenson for his great mentorship. He has been the one board member that has reached out and has given me some great direction. And so I, I thank you, and hope I do well. Thank you.
You will. Anything else? Well, I already thanked you, Mr. Stevens. You've, you know, so, thank you.
Ms. Patterson, before you go, I do have one comment based on, once again, I did thank everyone earlier in the community and for your support and staff members. Yes, it was a challenge, but we, like I said, we got through it together, and we just got to continue to stick together. We have to be creative, innovative, based on this COVID-19, and, and do what's best for everyone, from our staff members, for our students, parents, you name it. So we got to keep an open mind to all of that. And, and it's just not about me, you, it's about what we can give to our students and parents and to our community. So that was very important to me. Yes, it was tough decisions, but we, we, we made it, and we went through it. But there's one question I do have, Dr. Selico, on some of the comments that was earlier today from the community participation. Just wanted to make sure, and just curious to know, well, it wasn't from the community participation, but when, when these plans are in place for, for the, the back-to-school or whatever reopening, do we include, is it just the, the, the mindset of the cabinet and your administration? Or do we have teachers and everybody's involved when these decisions are made? Just want to make sure, if that's the case, or if not, I just, you know, because it's very important for those things, those factors to take place when these decisions, and when it's affecting everyone. So just curious to know, are those pieces are in place when decisions are made or by brainstorming and coming up with the best decisions?
Absolutely. From, from day one, we've had participation and people appointed by either the union leadership or we typically work together and ask them to, you know, send some people who would be good to represent on certain committees. We do the same. So we've collaborated all the way through, and this plan has been out there in various documents where people, we put them on Google Docs, where people have commented. Teachers had an opportunity to comment on plans, ask questions. We've addressed, you know, their concerns. They provided us with a whole list of questions. We actually got three different documents at one time coming from three different places. We put them all together, and we problem-solved together, tried to address everything we could. Obviously, we won't address every concern. And then, you know, with our classified staff, I've met a few times with them as well when issues had come up, because I don't want them to ever feel left out. They're a vital part of this organization. And I sometimes feel like, you know, that their voices may not be heard, and I want them to know that they are equally important in this, and many of them have been coming in every day. So I, I think, I'm thankful for all of them as well. But yes, Mr. Stevens, the whole, the whole way along, we've been collaborating.
Great. Now let me ask you this. Is there any plan now, how are we going to distribute or, or, or prepare our staff, whatever, for the vaccine that's coming out? Is there a plan to get that, or how, how does that work?
Well, right now, we just, the superintendent's just filled out a survey that they, right now, they are looking for just a number. They want it, because I believe they're coming up with a plan to push it out, and they don't know that until they have, you know, some, at least estimates. It didn't have to be exact, but I gave the number of people that I think will need the vaccine, vaccination. So we, that, that was the first step. And then, from what I understand, I did not hear the governor today. I was in negotiations all day. But that, another survey will come that will be looking at staff. And I'm not sure, I have to look into that a little bit, but if that's the case, we probably put a survey out to our staff to see who is interested in getting it. We can't mandate it, so then we will go from there. I did share in the survey that we would be willing to have people come on site to give us those, those shots. So rather than anyone having to go anywhere, we'd like people to come to us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I need a motion for adjournment.
So move.
It's been moved by, who was that? Mr. Stevens?
No.
Or Mr.?
No, Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Kennedy? Okay, who seconded?
Mr. Tensh.
All right, Mr. Tensh, it's been moved, properly moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Tensh?
Aye.
Mrs. Boynton?
Aye.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
And Mrs. Patterson?
Aye. Thank you, board. Thank you, Dr. Selico. Thank you, cabinet.
Thank you.
Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year. Take care.